Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 7th City Council Meeting. Trish, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glab.
Here.
Alderman McClatchy.
Here.
Alderman Bassi.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under that indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda items 5A through the comments. Is there anyone from the public that I can make a public comment? See none. Now moving on to consent agenda items 5A through 5D. Is there any council members wanting to vote no on these at the discussion? I'm looking for a motion to approve 5A through 5D at this time. Alderman Santee.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda items 5A through D as presented.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on any of these items? Alderman Glab.
Yeah, on the termination agreement for the standstill agreement. There are states of documents that are not covered as far as by the Open Meetings Act that can destroy certain documents. Does that come to the council for approval, or how does that work? As far as destroying the documents?
So, the Information Act. So, we have a document retention schedule that the state of Illinois says we have to keep documents a certain amount of time. So, when those, when that time comes up, I fill out a form, I send it to the state, Illinois Record Archives, the government entity through the state, and they sign off and say, "Okay, now you can restore these, now you can destroy these documents." So, I don't, no one's ever come to the council to say, "Hey, we're getting rid of documents." We have a schedule set by the state that we go by.
So, it's never approved by the council or anything else?
No, it's, no, it's approved by the state of Illinois, the Record Archives by the state of Illinois.
And really, they don't even know what the documents necessarily are exactly. They just know as far as the timeframe and...
They, they know what, like, what kind of a document it is, like contracts. Like contracts, once it's expired for 10 years, you can now destroy contracts. So, it wouldn't list exactly what the contracts are, but like, there's different, different types of documents, and they know the types of documents we're requesting to destroy, but not the exact, you know, not, they don't, we don't list every document out that we're getting rid of, because it's like thousands and thousands every year. So...
Yeah. No, I get that, it's just the fact that if somebody were to ask FOIA something, and then we just tell them, "Well, we've destroyed them already."
Yeah, so like, somebody could do a FOIA request and say, "I want a contract from 1970 that the city did," and I would, and so that's why we send something into the state of Illinois, and they sign off on it, and we can say, "Look, here's our certificate that says the state of Illinois Record Archives says, you know, contracts over this year, over this amount of age can be destroyed now." So then we have that document to prove, "Hey, we don't, you know, we don't have it, and this is why, because the state of Illinois told us to get rid of it now."
Well, I don't know if, how many documents we wind up destroying. I just know this was a very hot topic, and I'm sure there's documents in there that people would like to know about. There's probably a lot of documents that the council has never seen, and I almost kind of feel like if we're approving this, then we're approving to destroy some of these documents. When would we destroy them? I mean, not as the time goes by, but in some cases, it'd probably be right after the agreement, correct?
No, so like, let's say, financial documents, like all of Carolyn's treasurer stuff, banking stuff, that's seven years, you know, and, and the council sees, like, the list of bills we do every, every month, but you don't see, like, every single little banking document, you know? So every seven years, those go away, and that's, that's an industry governmental standard, you know, every seven years. Gosh, most of the documents you guys see, well, that's not true, too. There's a lot of documents that staff processes. There's no way you could see every document we see, like, it's thousands and thousands of documents.
Sure. No, I, I get it.
Yeah. Now, the big ones, you can see in the, in the, the whole world can see, you know? We have our document portal, all ordinances, minutes, agendas, resolutions, audits, budgets, all that stuff is out there for the whole world to see forever, really. But there's a lot of documents that are, they're just like staff-level documents, or documents you just wouldn't deal with on a monthly or meaningly basis.
Like I say, I just, we have an agreement in front of us that specifically states that we're going to destroy documents, and I guess with this agreement, then we're authorizing those documents to be destroyed right away, as long as they are within the legal ability to do them, correct?
It says that we will destroy, as opposed to we won't destroy. It says we will destroy them in accordance with the act.
In accordance with the act. So if some of them are exempt, that means you could, you will destroy them tomorrow, let's say. Is that right, or...
Whatever the rules are. They're just asking you to follow the rules.
Right.
And don't go outside of them and protect them.
Right, like I say, it just, it just came up, the fact that we're destroying documents, or we're approving, I guess, in this contract, that we're destroying documents that we've never seen, and that just kind of makes me uneasy, that we're destroying documents.
Well, that's not true. We've seen all the engineering, all the concept plans, the engineering plans that they use in quotes, the draft engineering plans, you've seen everything Shodine had, you saw. Because we have it, and we showed it to you, we didn't hold anything back. So, that's really not the issue that the city council hasn't seen it. It's just they don't necessarily want competitors to see it and use it and build a building at their expense.
No, and I get that. I, I can understand that, and it's part of the exemptions and everything else on that. I read the state statute completely on that one, just because I was kind of questioning what we legally can or can't do. So like I say, more so than anything else, you know, when we destroy documents, I kind of wonder as far as that means any communication between Shodine and the city. We, most of them, we've never seen, and that just kind of makes me wonder, you know, it's like, well, we, we take, we take executive session minutes that we approve to destroy every six months, and we're given a certain amount of time.
To release, to release every six months.
To release them, which, and, and then some to destroy, aren't there?
Every two years, we destroy the tapes.
Right, okay, the tapes.
The recordings of those meetings, not the minutes.
Okay.
The minutes are always there.
Okay.
Whether we release them or not.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I misspoke. When I said there's thousands of documents you don't see, I mean, like, not Shodine-related, you know? Like, just, you know, and so for minutes, minutes are forever permanent, like, minutes go on forever. It's the audio recordings of close session minutes are every year and a half.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, and I, and I commend you guys as far as the fact that when you get on the internet, it's amazing how far back you can go as far as agendas and minutes and everything else, the city council meetings. It makes me look like a rookie when I take a look at how old some of those are. So, I was just kind of questioning that, and I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Alderman Bassi.
I think my question is a follow-up to Alderman Glab's. You had mentioned correspondence, so part of the documents that could potentially or will be destroyed are, in fact, correspondence between staff and Shodine? Or would that be saved in perpetuity? Because I read this, and I read the statute and everything, so it was just the memorandum is what hit me. So, what would we be destroying?
I haven't even thought about destroying these documents yet, to be honest.
You're being thinkers here.
General correspondence, you keep a year, like, general correspondence.
Okay.
That is just like, you know, "Hey, we're going to meet next week," you know, just general stuff is a year. Everything else falls into the category, it's hard to explain. Correspondence, it's not general correspondence, falls into the category of what that's about. You know, like, if there's a contract going through email, that would be 10 years, but that's, we've got that contract kept for 10 years, you know, it's mostly meaningless. You know, the emails don't have much to them, other than, as far as I know, "Here's a document," or "Here's when we're going to meet," or whatever, you know? So, I don't think anybody's missing a whole lot there.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know. Chief Burke, could you speak to our retention policy for emails as well?
Right now, we keep all emails. You know, we're actually exploring the conversation of changing that, but right now, we don't delete emails. We keep them forever, so we're, they're subject to FOIA for as long as we have them. There does become a storage issue that, you know, that we have to look at as time goes on. Most municipalities are starting to get aggressive and make switches. Like Schaumburg, for instance, they keep, they keep their emails for 365 days, and they have a policy on it, and after 365 days, unless, if you needed it, it's your job to export it and save it if it's subject to the Records Act. Otherwise, the email itself is deleted, being gone. And this, we're seeing a growing trend in that because of the amount of data on the storage. So, that, to me, is the most aggressive one I've found, but we're on the exact opposite end of the spectrum. We do not delete emails.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. Thank you, Chief. So, the state of Illinois says you have to keep correspondence at least a year, you know, and like Chief said, I should have, I didn't even think about saying that. We keep email forever, right now, yep.
Alderman Davis.
Yeah. I would say we probably have to go look at the regulations, see what it are, see what it is, because there's, it depends on the type of data, and then you also have different types of storage. So, stored at onsite, stored and archived, offsite, there's different things, and depending on the different types of data it is, there's regulations, government, you know, state, federal, things that go along with that. There's international laws that go along with that, too, so that's all regulated. So, when it comes to the actual document, there's typically ways to get it. When we talk about emails, usually it's, on the corporate side of it, it's a year to 18 months typically, and then they wipe them, unless there's a legal hold or some other thing that they need to keep that for, so, just adding some comments.
Alderman Miller.
I was just going to add to the conversation as well. In my industry, we are very much subject to the Records Retention Act, and typically we are in the same, you have to keep all emails, correspondence emails, for at least a year. Anything that's a binding contract, we're subject to five years. Anything that's a non-binding contract is three years. So, I would suspect that if you broke this Records Act down, it's probably very similar to our Retention Act, and it depends on what it is, but the minimum would be a year.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is 6A, is the 2025 City Council meeting schedule. Looking for a motion to pass a resolution establishing the schedule of meetings for the McHenry City Council for the period January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Miller.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Alderman Santee.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by city council? Alderman Miller.
Are we missing the first meeting in January?
Yes. So, for, I've been here, this will be my, like, sixth January. Yeah, thanks. We've missed, we've skipped mostly the first meeting in January. We've had maybe one since I've been here. We discussed this as a staff. We don't have a reason to have to meet in January. If you guys feel like you want to meet, and you want to get another meeting in, you can, but we, I just didn't put it on there, because we've usually skipped that first meeting in January.
I'm good with that. I just thought maybe it was an oversight.
Alderman Bassi.
Same question, because I looked at that also. Can we put it on, and then maybe midway say, you know, "We really don't need it," or "We don't have anything?"
Yes.
Because it is kind of a gap between our last meeting in December and our first in January.
It's completely up to you all to decide what you want the schedule to be. I just, I just did it like it's normally been done. Speaking of how it's normally been done, we don't have to meet at 7:00 PM, you know, if you want to meet at 6:00. You know, I'm, I'm telling you what to do, but there's no rule or law that says you have to meet at 7:00. And so, like, we, our other boards were like, "Hey, do you want to move the meeting time up?" And they're like, "Yeah," and they love it. So I'm just saying, there's nothing that says we have to meet at 7:00, other than you guys say we meet at 7:00. And so I brought this up to other people, and nobody seems to have a big objection to it. So I just want to let you know, if you don't want to meet late, and you want to meet early, you set the time, you set the dates, you do what you want to do, you know what I mean? So, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not begging you to move it to 6:00, but some people like having an earlier meeting and going home earlier. So I'll, I'll be quiet the rest of the meeting now, though.
Alderman Miller.
I would like to amend my motion to add Monday, January 6th to the schedule, and have our meeting time at 6:00 PM.
Looking for a second?
I just want to, you're at, excuse me.
Go ahead.
You're asking to do 6 o'clock for the whole year?
Yeah.
I have some concerns with that. And here's my, I'll just give you one concern, Alderman Miller and the rest of the council, is that if constituents, citizens want to get here to the meeting, and they have a full workday workload, and they might not be able to get back into town until 6:00 or later, that, that's my concern. If, if it's one person or 100, that would be my concern, it's just that if the citizens can get here for an important meeting that they want to speak at the start, or whatever, that's, that's my concern with 6 o'clock. I'm agreeable to, to the January meeting, but also, just please understand that we can always make a decision in November, December, to do that meeting. You know, we can always set that schedule then, also. You know, we can add it, but if you're comfortable going that way, I am, but I am not comfortable with 6 o'clock.
So there's a motion on the floor right now by Alderman Miller. Is there a second? You want to, can she amend her motion?
That means it dies, dies without a second.
All right, Alderman Bassi, for a second.
I'll second it.
So, did you get that, Trish?
And also to add January 6th.
Okay.
Okay.
It's discussion anyway, so go ahead.
Okay, I second the original motion, so... No, no, that's okay, because I ain't seconding it. It's pretty easy. So if you, I just want to know what legal, what do I have to say, or what does she have to do in regards to dismissing my, you know, motion? Dismiss it? I second the, the original motion. Okay.
In a second.
All right.
Go ahead, Alderman Miller.
So, for discussion purposes, we have a motion and a second for an amendment to move to 6 o'clock. Does 6 o'clock not work for anybody at the table? Andy, does it, 6 o'clock work for you?
No.
You don't get back in time for 6?
I don't think, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Alderman Santee, is the fact that the reason why we've always had them at 7 o'clock is because of people that would like to come to the council meetings and have something to discuss with the council, that they have a hard time to get here before 7 o'clock, and that's why we've always kept it at 7 o'clock, and it's been 7 o'clock since I can remember.
Alderman McClatchy.
Thank you. I can go either way. I'd like the, the idea of having a January 6th meeting, because that's a whole month that we're not even talking, so we can always cancel it.
Yep.
So, as far as the time, I, I can go either way, to be honest with you. I'm usually sitting around doing nothing between 6:00 and 7:00, so...
I'm usually here at 6:00, you know, so...
Any other discussion on this item? Alderman Cook.
Yeah, I, I think 6 o'clock is a little too early for me. 7 o'clock is fine. I do have concerns whether people showing up. My schedule is totally wacko. 7 o'clock seems to work for me.
Any other discussion? Alderman Davis.
Yeah, 6:00 might be a little tight. I mean, you know, so if we leave at 7:00, we go, or move it to 6:00 there or something, I mean, meet in the middle, I don't care. I can adjust my stuff if need to, but if we're talking about other people showing up and, you know.
Okay. Go ahead, Alderman Miller.
So, my only other comment that I would have is that I often do speak with people who say, "I don't come to the meetings, because they start at 7:00." And by the time I get home, I get settled, feed my family, I don't come to the meetings, because then I have to get dressed again to go back out. So, you know, again, it's a splitting squash moment, where, you know, if you hit it down the middle, half the people are in and half the people are out. Clearly, we're not attracting crowd seven, so doing the same thing and expecting a different result has already been defined. I'm just trying to change it and do something different.
Any other discussion? Alderman Glab.
Yeah, I think I've been on the council longer than anybody, and I have never, ever had a constituent or other people in the city ever complain about the fact that council meetings are that late. And I'm, I'm appalled the fact that, nobody would think 7 o'clock is that late. You know, this isn't a town that was back in the 40s or 50s when they used to roll up the, the town when it started getting dark. People are used to 7 o'clock, and I just can't see taking and reducing the hours earlier than that. I would hate to see to where somebody can't make it to any council meeting because of that, and that we're holding them back because of it. I don't see where people won't, won't come out at 7:00 if they could come out at 6:00. But unfortunately, there are some people that can't make it at 6:00, and I would really like to stay at 7:00, and I'm really adamant about that. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a point.
Go ahead.
Just a point order. We're voting on amendment. Right. So if that fails, we have to make another amendment to make January 6th.
A new amendment.
Okay.
One other thing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Alderman Bassi, go ahead.
Alderman Miller, do you want to just have the June, or January 6th to your amendment, and we can discuss at 6:00? Okay.
Yeah, you have to vote it through.
All right, because, you know, I'm one of the lucky ones. It doesn't matter to me.
Trish, could you make the motion if you're clear on that? So everybody else is?
So, I have a motion on the floor by Alderman Miller, and seconded by Alderman Bassi, to have the January 6th meeting, and then also the idea of the 6:00 PM start time. Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, so the, the vote's going to be on the amendment, not on whether or not we're passing it, correct?
That was the amendment that I read.
She made, she made a motion to amend it. Now we have to vote on whether or not we are going to amend it, and then whether or not we are going to pass it. So we have two votes coming, correct?
No. That's parliamentary correct, but that's not what was stated.
Right.
Was not stated by...
How you do an amendment, but that's not the way the city council just made that motion.
We follow Robert's Rules, and Robert's Rules say that we amend it.
The motion wasn't simply to make an amendment, is there a second to make an amendment? It was, an amendment with detail. So, the, the motion seems clear to the clerk, and we ought to vote on that, and then go back, depending on how, what the result is, to the original docket. Is everybody clear on what they're voting on? That's what matters.
That's not how Robert's Rules go.
I did, but that's not what she did.
Years back, we took and we, we adopted Robert's Rules, and that's how Robert's Rules works.
How would you like to resolve this, Andy?
Well, we're supposed to vote on whether or not we even want to accept the amendment, and then we vote on what the amended motion is.
What does accepted mean? Put it on the table?
Well, we, we vote whether or not we amend the motion. She made a, a motion to amend, and then somebody seconded that. Now we vote whether or not we accept that, that amendment. Then we vote on whether or not we want that amendment or not.
Okay, if everybody's clear, let's vote.
That's, that's, that's the way it is in Robert's Rules.
A motion to amend.
It's only whether or not we're going to amend, apparently, to Alderman Glab. Everyone agrees with that, that's what we're going to do.
So is it maybe Alderman Miller and Alderman Bassi?
Yeah.
Okay.
It sounds like it's going to die anyway, but if it passes, we'll have to debate on what that means.
Yeah, I'll watch the video tomorrow.
We've all made amendments to a motion.
I know that, but Alderman's raising a parliamentary issue, and you can't correct it, because the motion's already out with the second. I agree with you.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
No.
Alderman Glab.
No.
Alderman McClatchy.
No.
Okay. Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
No.
Okay, so that died. So now I'm looking for a motion to approve 6A, 2025 City Council meeting minute, meeting schedule, adding January 6th to the meeting schedule, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Uh, there.
Is that right?
No. We need to have the first motion, then withdrawn, actually, either ended or withdrawn, one or the other.
No.
No, because it's in a...
We have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
So you can't change it.
And it can still, it can still be amended, and it should be amended.
Yeah, she's just making her motion and adding something.
Oh, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to amend...
Your original motion was for December...
No, so the original motion's on the floor to approve the city's schedule.
To approve what was presented.
I'm making an amendment to add a January 6th meeting to the motion. So I'm amending the original motion to approve the city meeting, meeting schedule by adding one day.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that, then.
Okay, now let's have a roll call on that, and if it's passed, then we're going to vote on the original schedule with the due date. This is the only motion, is if you're going to follow parliamentary procedure, is whether or not we're going to amend the original motion. That's it. With just one item, the date.
Okay.
Go ahead. I don't want to put legs on a snake here, but couldn't you just make the motion and just say, "I want to include that"?
Yes, I know, I would pass that. Either go with parliamentary procedure, and we have the book, we can do it, or we make it simple, the way we've been doing it for 100 years. Either way, if it works, either way.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Third and final motion. Third and final motion. We just got the original motion.
So just go ahead and call for the same, this motion? With January 6th? I thought we just did that.
No.
I'm looking for a motion for 6A as presented, including January 6th.
Right.
Looking for a motion in a second. It's already on the table, is that how?
What in the hell is going on?
No, because what we just did was Alderman Miller said, "Hey, I want to go ahead and do a motion to amend January sixth." So, then we voted on that and now we have to go back and say, "Okay, everybody..." Right.
Original with...
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, can you get it?
All right, please call the roll.
Okay, so Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Okay, and then who seconded that? Okay, Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Glab.
What was the motion on, exactly?
Adding six.
Original schedule with January sixth.
Okay, so we amended A and are we voting for just A or A through D? Because wasn't the original motion for the whole agenda? And then we went into discussion? I mean, the, for all, oh, that's right, okay, okay, yes.
Okay, Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Okay, we're good.
So, we need direction going forward at some point, at some meeting, maybe the one in January since we're not doing anything about whether we're going to follow parliamentary procedure on these procedural issues or make it simple. I just need to know which way so I can help direct the clerk on how to handle these things in the future. We were handling them very simply, but I can go either way. It's just they need a little bit of an education on that, so someday.
We'll get back to that. All right, six B is BYOA liquor license ordinance, a motion to pass an ordinance amending Title four dash two dash six subsection D five, class E BYOA license of the city of McHenry code. Looking for a motion to approve six B as presented, Alderman Santee.
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion on this item by city council? I see none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six C, South Waste Water Treatment Plant Secondary Clarifier Rehabilitation, a motion to accept a bid from DPS Equipment Services Incorporated for the amount of $106,200 and a 10% contingency of $10,620 for the rebuild of four secondary clarifier drive assemblies at the South Waste Water Treatment Plant. Looking for a motion to approve. Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion to approve new mixers at the clarification site.
Second, Alderman Cook?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by city council? Alderman Davis, go ahead.
Yeah, just one question. Have we used that DPS before?
Yes, we have.
That's all I was asking.
Any other comments, questions by city council? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Cook.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Bassi.
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is six D, elected official compensation, motion to pass an ordinance amending section one dash six dash two, city council subsection B, compensation in section one dash seven dash three, city clerk subsection C, salary of the McHenry city code. Looking for a motion to approve six D as presented.
Might want to discuss that first.
Want to do a discussion?
Yeah, we need direction. If you look at the draft agenda supplement or the agenda supplement, the draft ordinance has blanks in it. We should, if you're going to move it at all, you should have a consensus on what those movements are and then make the motion because otherwise you're going to be back to amending the motion again.
We don't want to do that.
I have improvement.
Yeah.
This is really the administrator's...
So, let's go ahead, let's go ahead and have a discussion item on this. So, anyone, McClatchy, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. We talked about this last meeting and I think Alderman Santee hit it on the head. We do this because we like doing it. I love doing my job. In fact, my pay is helping people. And I got to say that the job is easy because we got great directors. You get a problem, you pick up the phone and they take care of it. From the chief on down, they do a good job. So, I, you know, I'm very happy where it's at right now and I don't think we need to play, you know, keep up with the Joneses because we've looked at other cities. I think, I think what we're doing is fine right now.
Any other comments? Alderman Miller?
I am not in favor of increasing our compensation. I am a firm believer that we have other things on our budget that are more worthy of additional funds if we have them. And given that this council was adamant about staying at our same levy, I think each and every dollar is important.
Agreed, thank you. Alderman Cook?
I just look at it as like how well the council works with directors and everything else and keeping up everything. I thought it'd be a nice pat on the back for all the Aldermen to get a little something extra. It's not massive amounts. We're not asking for $100,000 a year or whatever. It's just a little, say, "Hey, you're all doing a good job, keep it up." That's all. And show appreciation. It's going to be another two years before anything of this kicks in, but, you know, I thought it'd be a nice gesture to pat everybody on the back a little bit. Like I said, it's a drop in the bucket compared to other things that we have to deal with. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Which number does he want?
So, which number do you want? There's two options, so it's 4,800 or 5,400 a year.
Fifty-four.
Okay, and then are we talking about the city clerk as well or is that a separate topic?
Separate.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments by city council? Go ahead.
I mean, Alderman McClatchy spoke for me for my last meeting, so you know where I stand on it. I just, I think we need to hear from four others.
Correct. Alderman Glab?
I guess one of the concerns I have is the fact that when you leave it that low, it does make it disenchanteding for some people that might run if it was a little bit more money and there might be more competition within the wards. Not necessarily, you want people to run for the money, but sometimes some people just say, you know, "I wind up probably spending more time, or more money sometimes running around than what they're paying." So, I guess more so than anything else is the fact that when this is discussed again by council, whether it's two years, four years, six years down the road, when it becomes an issue as far as somebody wanting an increase, they're going to be looking at what the dollars are worth at that time and it's just going to seem to be that large, that much of a larger raise to the public. Maybe there should be some kind of an inflationary figure put in there over the years to where there isn't these discussions. You know, how many years since the last time that we went to the 350 a month? That's my only thought on it, more so than anything else because I've seen other taxing bodies that have raised their salaries to where I've made it kind of questionable in my mind of, you know, the ethics of it or anything else. And the way I look at it is whatever the council decides, fine, but I just think there should be some kind of inflationary so that the council doesn't fall way, way behind, way behind to where somebody later on is going to be hard for us to bring up that salary at least, who knows? I mean, we don't know what the future's going to bring. We might wind up with a downturn in the economy as far as instead of a inflationary, it might be a deflationary. I doubt it, but you never know, you know, what the future's going to hold. But it would be nice to have something that was just set up, you know, set up every year to where the adjustment's done automatically rather than having to bring it to the council to discuss every, every so often. That's my feeling on it, but whatever we decide is fine with me.
Alderman Santee?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what I said at the last meeting. I'm not here for the money, I never have been, never will be. And in my 20 years, I never had a conversation with a elected official in the city of McHenry running for a position or in the position ever caught to be and give me a reason that they ran is because of the money. There's a lot more reasoning out there and I would leave it at that. Thank you.
Alderman Davis?
Yeah, I mean, I go either way. It's not that big a deal, that's not why I joined either, but, and it's minimal, what we had talked about adding anyways, so if, I don't really care either way. If it's a concern of there's going to be more meetings because of things that we're doing, then maybe you add something in for up and, any meetings up and above, there's a fee for that. I don't care either way, but if you're trying to meet in the middle, maybe that's the right thing to do so that we're not adding, you know, twice as many meetings next year just because we want extra meetings. If that eases people's minds, great, otherwise, I mean, the change is minimal at this point, so it's, I'm fine either way.
Alderman Bassi?
My only concern is where's the money coming from? As a finance person, I would have a difficult time asking my constituents for a raise knowing some people are still struggling to put food on the table. So, if it was a net zero, I would be in favor of it, but I would have to know exactly where the money's coming from.
They don't know what that means.
No change.
So, announce it.
Yeah.
It sounds like we have no change to the salary for all people. Well, we have to finish off the clerk. It's treated as one in the ordinance, so we'll deal with that once you finish the clerk.
All right, so then, go ahead, Alderman Santee.
If we've heard from everybody, are we prepared to make a motion then?
Well, the proposed ordinance deals with both the council and the clerk, so...
We're going to the clerk's side.
Okay, my comment on the clerk is that it would be, stay the same.
Okay.
I mean, not just one of seven, but just so it's accurate. Thank you.
Alderman Glab?
Yeah, what, uh...
Clerk? Clerk? Same?
I guess whatever anybody else decides, the clerk, I know with discussions with other people that, well, clerk does have Monte to help her and everything else. When this was set up, I don't think Monte was doing it for the clerk at the time, but then there was, I think Kathy Kunder at the time. So, there was always an assistant for the clerk at city hall. So, nothing's changed, so I don't know if there's any need to change things.
Alderman McClatchy?
I almost consider the city clerk's office as a department and if they need a little bump or something, I have no problem with that at all. You know, as far as Aldermen, that's a different story. I'd like to give all the department heads a raise, but I think it'd be appropriate to raise it a little bit.
Thank you. Alderman Bassi?
Can I just ask Alderman McClatchy, what did you just say? You want to, you want to raise for the clerk? Is that what you had said?
Right.
Okay, because I'm also keeping my notes, okay. Again, where's the money coming from and I will agree with what the majority is.
Alderman Davis?
With the recent inflationary increase and stuff, I don't see a problem with a little bit of an increase either. What that would be, I think we'd probably need to put some pen to paper to figure that number out, but I don't have a problem with increasing, you know, within reason.
Alderman Cook?
I'm a no. Just, you know, keep it at a status quo then. We're not going to get rid of the city clerk or whatever, depending on how much work is being done, leave it as is then.
Alderman Miller?
Given Monte's examples that we had in the packet, I think an increase for city clerk should be considered, but I don't have a number.
Okay. Trish, would you like to make a comment regarding this?
Well, obviously, I did this role because I have a communications degree and I wanted to get in this role when the administrator actually interviewed me. So, Derek interviewed me because I wanted to have a side role that would allow me to use the skills that I had gone to school for. And so, this was a way for me to be involved in the community, but not yet have to vote in the community. Of course, everyone would like a little bump. I feel like I do a lot of work and I don't get to vote. So, this technically is like a side job for me. And I do it to try to keep my skills up to par, to help me with my full-time job as well. And yes, everybody does struggle and could always use a little extra bump in pay, but don't take for granted the amount of time that it takes when we have public comment, which is great, but I have to go through, listen to the videos and whatnot, and I wouldn't do if I didn't want to be here. But I definitely think that everybody in this room deserves a little pay bump because we do a lot of work for the city and you want to be here, but also it shows a little appreciation as well. So, regardless, I'll still be doing the notes and running, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there and the reason why I'm sitting here. It's to make connections to network, to find out what's going on in this community that I work and live in. But also, that's just kind of like my little, it's kind of a little side job for me as well, so unfortunately, I don't get to vote like you all do, so. And that's my ton of sense.
Thanks, Trish.
Sure.
Well, if you look at the draft ordinance that's provided to you on page 40, hard page 46 at the bottom, I guess it's electronic page 46. This was the proposed ordinance and based on the city council comments, one, two won't change, so you can just delete that. Section one from the proposed ordinance. Section two needs you to fill in the blank. We don't need to do it tonight, but you need to do it next meeting. Maybe the meeting, you're cutting it close, we'll have to count the days, but it should be done October for sure to be effective. Then we need to do it tonight. Tonight's the night. Otherwise, it'll be too late. Remember, this isn't for Trish, it's for whoever's the clerk in the spring. Are you up? Yeah.
Go ahead, Alderman Santee.
Okay, so when we did our straw poll here, I got the impression there were four positives for some type of extra compensation on the clerk's position. Today, that number is at what?
There's three.
There's only three?
Three people indicated they wanted an increase.
Okay, but then Alderman Bassi said, "I'll..."
Well, go with the majority, but we don't know what the...
Do you want to break the straw poll, Mayor? Because I guess she doesn't have to go with the three or three.
Andy also said he would do with whatever everyone just said.
Yeah, there are two question marks, Alderman Glab and Bassi kind of question marks and then no change were two.
Back to my original, then there is a majority. Because if they want to go wherever the majority wants to go, then they're going to follow the other three votes that said, you know, they're willing to give her a raise.
Not necessarily will our votes go with whatever the other three votes are. That's why we have votes, that's we don't take consensus on something that we changed an ordinance on.
Can you give us some direction though, so we don't spin our wheels here?
Okay. My direction is, is I don't see, if we're going to take a stand on city council, I don't see why we don't leave the city clerk at this compensation. It's 60-some hundred dollars a year if she's at every meeting. I think that's for a city clerk, I think, part-time. I don't know, Trish, how many hours do you spend in city hall?
How many hours do I spend doing the minutes?
No, how many hours do you spend in city hall?
I just come to the meetings.
You basically do most of everything at home, correct?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But you need to ask me how many hours I work on it at home. Because I think it just depends on the meeting length, you know what I mean?
I mean, to do the minutes of the meeting, you have to come into city hall to sign documents, I'm sure, or do we do that electronically?
We do everything electronically, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think it's 60-some hundred dollars, I think is a fair amount we're paying. I don't know if we really need to bump that up at all. It's my feeling anyway.
Alderman Bassi?
I'm happy to be the tiebreaker. I'm just going to leave the salary as is.
Okay. So, we don't need an ordinance nor do we need to vote on that, right?
Right. We'll just remove six D without action.
All right. Got it, so we'll remove six D without any action tonight. Any staff reports this evening? See none? Mayor's report? David, you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, I wanted to follow up from, I think it was last meeting or the meeting before where you were going back to unwinding the Shodine matters. We're almost there. You gave authority to cancel the Walworth, Walrose contract, which is the apartment buildings on the water treatment line nearby, and the Carey Electric contract with a direction treatment plant nearby, and the Carey Electric contract with a direction to try and make it bilateral by agreement with the Carey family, which I have done. And what the Carey family, through Tom, is asking is that we provide him with a letter indicating what our stance is with regard to eminent domain. So, I took the liberty of writing a draft letter for you to consider. And it has been approved by the Carrys, if it's acceptable to use the city council. And then they would sign off on the cancellation, which, again, we don't need from them necessarily, but it would be better for everyone involved if we canceled it by agreement, as opposed to unilaterally. Do I have enough of?
I do need one, so there's.
You'll need to take a minute to read that. So, I'm now looking for a vote. And if it were happened, I'm just looking for what he asked for was a consensus of each one of you. And if it was unanimous, then I would change the center of this from being majority consensus to a unanimous consensus. So, if you could just let me know if you agree to have me here send this letter, I would appreciate it, one by one.
Alderman Miller, good. Alderman Cook?
I'm good.
Alderman Davis?
I'm good.
Alderman Bassi?
You know how I feel about it. I'm good.
Alderman McClatchy?
I'm good.
Alderman?
The only thing that bothers me is the fact that, you know, we would wanna take over all the property, but what about as far as if Waikiki Road needs to be widened over there, or whatever comes forward to us as far as the treatment center plant? That's the only part that I, I kind of, you know, yes, we'd like to occur more right away, but if they play hardball, you know, eminent domain is, we don't like using, we've never used eminent domain since I can remember. And I don't wanna start using it, but all I'm saying is, if for some reason, you know, down in the road that we need to create that.
That's last sentence. So, we made it clear with Carey that, and he totally understands that it's only the consensus of this city council actually tonight. But I made it through the term because I said, you know, this is not ending on future city councils. So, unless you decide tomorrow, it might look a little funny if you decide tomorrow to condemn the road, but the intent is the building, of course. They're home.
Sure. No, and I get that.
And they just want us to go to them and negotiate, which we have to do anyway. We fully explain that to them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, it's all, it has nothing to do with the road.
You know, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I never really thought much about anything other than a road through there originally, when we were first talking about the development of the treatment plant. And that's all I worry about is that we have the sufficient roadway we needed there, and that's it. So, other than that, I have no problem with this.
All right. Alderman Sandy? And Alderman McClatchy is good.
And Mayor Jett?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So, just to summarize where we are very quickly, we're almost back to square one with the termination, the standstill agreement, the termination of the two contracts, Carey and Walrose, no movement on Dees Marine, the school district's property, you know, where that is. The only things left outstanding to prevent us from getting to where we're on is Green Street option. Remember, that's still on the table through, I think there's a date of December of twenty-five where that option has to be exercised. We'll remind you of that if you don't wanna move on that right now, one way or the other. And then I think we still have environmental contracts out and maybe engineering contracts out that have probably been stopped up by the staff. But otherwise, we're moved outward quite a bit.
Okay. City council comments? Alderman Glenn?
I was just gonna state that.
Green Street, yeah, Cafe.
Now, with the Shodin proposals all being gone, and Shodin being gone, basically, we talked about the January sixth meeting, and maybe that would be a good meeting to have a committee of the whole to just start discussing where we go as far as moving forward. Because we do have some property that we bought and that we're with, and maybe it would be just a good, good meeting to take and have an open discussion as far as what we wanna see for the future and where we're heading, so that staff can start contacting developers or, you know, economic development can. And at least, they can actually say, this is what the council's looking for, and, you know, where we wanna go, rather than say, well, just give us a proposal and let's see where we're going. You know, we'd like to develop in McHenry. No. The council and the city of McHenry wants to see this, this, and this starting, and, you know, are you interested in being one of the developers? And I just think the January sixth meeting might be something good for that, you know, just for, like I say, just for discussion. So, it's just a suggestion, that's all.
If we're gonna have that, I mean, I think January sixth is a little late. I mean, I'm hoping that we're gonna be working on these properties now and waiting four, five, six months. So.
Well, it wouldn't be four, five, six months, but, you know, I just figured that we had, we had the open meeting, we just filled in as far as January sixth, that maybe that would have been a good time to do it. If we do it before that, that's fine with me, too.
Yeah, I'd suggest that we do it before January sixth if we do it. By the time you go to January sixth, and you do months after that of putting it in place and getting staff, you know, getting up with developers and so forth, I mean, it's just, it is gonna be four, five, six months. So, I don't wanna waste any more time that we've already wasted on properties that we own. So. Alderman Miller?
I just wanna remind the public that we've just spent almost a year revising our comp plan. And for the first time ever, we have a vision to the future with, obviously, professional assistance to get there. So, I believe we are more prepared than ever to redevelop downtown because we've spent a year creating a plan that we have all had input to, all participated with, and have all but approved a final comp plan for development to work with.
Agreed. I think our concern is that we go follow that plan, and then we go through these, all these steps, and then we have no votes going across the board. So, I think that's definitely a concern we have.
But to that point, we spent a lot of time in the downtown area on that comp plan, and our vision wasn't far off with the developer we've just rejected. We, you know, we know what we need. We know what, we know what the public wants, and we have to be forward-thinking. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
Thank you. Just a closing comment. We live in a great city, and we're going in the right direction. There's a lot going on. We're fortunate to have a river run down our backyard. Yeah, in the wintertime, it snows, gets cold. Summertime, you get a thunderstorm rolls through. And with that said, I wanna say, Godspeed, Florida.
Any other city council comments? Alderman Glenn?
Yeah, just Director Hobson's got two or three minutes after the council meeting. I just, one little thing I need to ask you about. Well, we could do it just before executive session if we could. Just three minutes, not even. I don't even need three minutes.
Okay. Any other city council comments? Alderman Sandy?
Am I gonna beat you to the punch here? Bill, I mean, any, I'll say something, but the light, Light the Night evening?
I can't say enough of what Light the Night was. You know, I put a little blurb in there. There's no description that I could give you of how successful that evening was for downtown, for all of our businesses downtown, the mobility. For the point itself, I estimate three thousand to thirty-five hundred people were down there, largely composed of families. They stayed through, all the way through the evening. We had six food trucks. We had fifteen craft vendors. The weather was beautiful, but it was the epitome of a perfect night for our downtown. When you saw just the people walking around, businesses were full and doing well. But the atmosphere that was down at Miller Point that evening, the comments, the amount of positive comments that heard for the entirety of the event, it just was really an uplifting event overall. So, thank you all for being a part of that, and look forward to the, to the next year. But that's, when you look at that space and you were down there, you know, even the fireworks was outstanding. It just, people, sometimes will leave before that, and you looked out from the crowd that evening, and all the way through the end of that show that evening, the park was packed. So, again, thank you. And it was a great night for all of downtown, especially with the mobility of that event.
Alderman Miller?
So, and kudos to that park and the commitment of this council to create it. If anybody was down there yesterday for the homecoming events, it just, it sorta just mimicked every other event we've had down there. And it was a special interest group, obviously, the high school homecoming, but the park was full. Parking was full. People were wandering. It just really speaks to us and our commitment downtown and reinventing who we are. So, thank you to each and every one of you, and more importantly, thank you to Bill. Steve, I know your guys are out there busting their butts over the weekend, getting that park in great shape. So, thank you, everybody, for your work.
Alderman Glenn?
Bill, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow. That way, we can keep going with everything. Thank you.
Any other city council comments? All right. Right now, we're gonna go into executive session to discuss the performance of specific employees, five I L C S, one twenty-two C one. At this time, it asks all staff. Monty is going to stay, right? No? No, Monty? No, you can go. Go ahead. And then I would ask the public to please exit the room as we go into executive session.
Will there be a vote after?
No.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Motion to go into executive session?
Yeah, go ahead. The motion, second? Is there a second to go? Alderman Bassi?
Okay, Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Bassi?
Yes.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Cook?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
It's okay. It's all right. Well, was that a attendance or a motion?
Roll call.